Alright, so I have six o'clock, so thank you everybody for coming to the third of five budget workshops. This budget workshop is going to be done by Police Chief Mark Spain for the Police Department. Again, our budget workshops are in preparation for the budget presentation which will take place on November 15th. Each of these presentations being done by the department head, the numbers that are in here are driven by department head requests and by the Finance Department researching each of these different accounts, trends over the past few years and future trends preparing for that. The purpose of these meetings is for the department heads to express what it takes to run their departments, presenting that to the Council so that the Council can give feedback and help me prepare the final budget presentation in November. So again, thank you all for coming, and Chief Spain, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, I want to start off by saying that there are certain issues that have to do with the Police Department that are operationally sensitive. So there may be some things that I glean over, I'm hoping that I'm gonna be able to get enough detail to you that will answer any questions that you may have. But when we start talking about items like staffing, that becomes operationally sensitive, and I don't want to go down to the specific. So, the, uh... In the 2018 budget workshop, which was last year at this time, my request started out with a $400,000 overtime budget and two additional officers, one being a vital transfer and one recruit officer. The 2018 budget approval, I don't even think I got out of the GM meeting with the $400,000, it got knocked down pretty quickly. It went down to a $300,000 overtime budget with one recruit officer. So the issue was, we were kind of behind from a staffing level, and on top of that, you had a reduction in the request of overtime. So, starting in 2018, we were already behind people when it came down to our requests. All the figures that are in this presentation are based on an average overtime rate. So what I did was, I took the total overtime and just did an average by the number of officers. So the average overtime rate per shift is about $423.68, about $8,500 a month and $101,000 a year. And that's based on a regular work day, work week, work year. So one of the biggest things that we've had to tackle, and we never really set up a budget to compensate for this, is our injured on duty. Injured on duty are officers that suffer an injury during the course of their regular duty. In 2018, we had four officers that were out for a period, injured on duty, for a period of 584 workdays. One officer is currently out on extended injured on duty. The cost of overtime so far as of 10/5 to replace that one person in totality is about $100,000. One officer has been out on administrative leave since April 2nd. He was on the payroll until, I think, around July. So to replace that one officer was another $12,000, which between the administrative and the injured on duty came to about $112,000 out of the overtime pool. The total overtime to date for the Police Department is about $358,000. So, to let everybody know, we just didn't sit and kind of let this money pour out the door. We put some contingencies in place with the agreement with the Union that we were going to make some staffing changes on the first platoon. When we did that, it affected 149 shifts up until today's date, excuse me, up until October 1st. And there were savings of about $63,000 just with the first platoon, which is midnights. And then we made some policy-related changes in regards to release time and sick time that affected everybody in the department. Another 53 shifts which saved us another $22,000. And then staffing shortages where we just didn't have enough to bring us up to our minimum manning saved us another $13,000. So the total savings with those three policies that we put in place was $98,717.
Most staffing changes are done in person?
Uh, it had to do with manpower, but I don't want to be specific about it.
You're also saying the shortages, so how to handle the shortages, where to put out?
Uh, there were different instances. So one time, we had, I came in and worked four shifts over the weekend because we just didn't have enough guys to pull from to fill the shifts. Sometimes we just worked short depending on what the shift was. So instead of working with four guys, sometimes we're working three.
So Mark, you're setting a preference to leaving the shift to be overtime, and you actually did it already, all 13 times?
Uh...
Thirty-one times?
From a management perspective? We called everybody that was eligible for overtime. Nobody came in. The guys that were working had already worked 16 hours, I can't mandate that they stay cast 16 hours. So there was nobody to call. There was nobody else to call to come in. The reason I came in is because we exhausted all our resources, and I felt based on the timeliness of when it was a weekend, and there was no way in good conscience that I could let two guys work, so I came in.
That's nice of you, no?
No, no, I know.
But I understand what you're saying. If you can work this many times without one, why not all the time?
You mean me?
Yeah. So we can work short more times?
So what you're saying is, Chief's gonna come in and save us, so don't worry about coming in?
I'm not, I'm just giving a scenario. I'm not saying that's why we wouldn't work.
Yeah, well, I think...
Because they don't care if they worked it, you know?
Well, I think the issue is, number one, I don't get paid for coming in or working those three shifts over, I don't understand. So, uh, but I think the other thing is, is that, you know, we were kind of in desperate times, and in that case, desperate times call for desperate management.
I appreciate you coming in. I'm not getting for that. But I'm just saying, I was looking at it this hard, why, why? If they don't want to work the 31 other times, why, why work the 600 other times?
You're saying let the ship go to two men? If you don't have enough. What you're saying is dangerous, or maybe...
Absolutely. These 31 shifts, we live with the angels.
Maybe with the partner outside, I don't know.
Yeah.
They were twos?
Uh, twos, yeah. Not all of them, some of them were. There was some threes that we approved the overtime, we just took them from.
Thank you. Sure. I bet your girth stands up.
Chief, just to clarify, there's currently no contractual minimum manning?
That's correct. Okay, so what I did was, I took our overtime and I broke it down monthly, and I broke it down by what causes the overtime. You can see the highlight of mine here is the injured on duty that we talked about. Now, I know I said it was a little over $100,000, but it's 95, it's because it's calculated on a monthly, not on a pay period, so we're still a little behind as far as our totals go. But we also had that administrative assignment that we were talking about, the one officer that was on admin leave and FMLA. But you would see that every other line is accounted for: arrest, which is late arrest, passage of shift, court, which we get reimbursed for, DWI, traffic, truck safety, which is DOT. DOT, that truck safety overtime, that's a very lucrative overtime. All the tickets that we write are payable, based on New York State law, payable in the thousands of dollars. So that's a very lucrative overtime detail. Training overtime, and then all of overtime is caused by release time. Guys taking the day off, arraignment time, penitentiary time, family sick, holiday, and any other reason that a guy would have to take the day off. Investigations is split out. Investigations is a common, is a combination of our DEA arrangement, the arrangement that we have with the Drug Enforcement Administration, as well as homegrown cases that were worked. So we don't separate those out, at least for this, as far as this pool is concerned. Down in the red, that's the revenue that we generate every month. And you can see that, you know, we stay pretty close from the expenditure standpoint to the revenue standpoint, a couple times exceeding it, but our revenue is pretty steady from the thousands of dollars that comes in per month to a tune of about $225,000 so far this year, going into the end of September.
Those are receipts, or is that...?
Those are receipts. No, those are mon, that's money in the bank.
So then Mark, you're talking about the cost or the difference between the 225 and 345?
Yes, sir. So it's about $120,000 from the total overtime expenditure to the total revenue receipt. So, injured on duty is our major obstacle, and that's what we're trying to make up for here. IOD reduces the amount of available officers that can work a shift. It mandates overtime for officers working a given shift. And what I mean by that is, I'll come in and I'll work days thinking I'm going home at 4:00. And then, there's an opening at 4:00, and I'm told, "You're the low guy, now you're staying for 16 hours." So I'm mandated to stay, so I walk in the door thinking I'm only working eight. But because there's a shortage on 4:12, I'm staying, and I'm mandated to stay. It reduces productivity due to the fatigue factors. You got guys that are working sometimes two or three doubles in a row in a week, and that kind of drains... You go home, you go to bed, you get up, you go to work.
Always a low sky?
Oh, well, mandatory is always a low sky. So look on a shift and then nobody takes it down. Yeah, it's a little different with us. So, your day off, if it's my day off and it's a day overtime shift, I get first shot in. Then it's previous shift, then it's secondary. Uh, it increases the risk of injury and possibly furthering the issue, because we already have an issue with injured on duty. And it compounds the effect of release time, that release time has on overtime. And these next couple slides will get into that a little bit. So what I did was, I put up our manpower, kind of what it looks like. First platoon, which is midnight, second platoon days, third platoon afternoons. Anybody that's shaded in gray right here has the day off, we pick them on day. So they have the day off. So you can see that even though guys have the day off, we still have enough to run a shift. They're not overtime, based strictly on days off. Okay? But what happens is, once we add injured on duty to the mix, and I'm gonna put everybody in red now. So the red is a combination of injured on duty or the day off. So from January 1st, and this is, shouldn't be April 2nd, it should be, I believe, March 2nd. March 2nd. Anybody in red isn't doing that day, they're not coming to work. They're either on a day off or they're injured on duty. So you can see on all three platoons, we either have guys on days off, or guys on days off and injured on duty. So the only ones that we have to choose from right now are these four guys. Contractually, I have to give one guy a day off, okay, which furthers this. So now you can take another patrolman, if he wants to take a vacation day, he can take that day off, which leaves me with three guys. Okay? Could cause an overtime situation right off the bat. Walking in the door, same thing with second platoon, same thing with third platoon. Now you'll see as we go along, the dips around the top, this is from March 2nd to March 5th, alright? Check out the first platoon, only three guys doing it for that time period right now. And that's, somebody can still take that day off. And if they have personal leave time, two people can take that day off. And if they have sick time, you got nobody doing it. And there's several times during the year where we face that. Everybody that's working afternoons the night before gets stopped for midnights, mandatory. So that's what we're facing, and that's what's driving our overtime right now. It's driving our overtime expenses to the tune of about $100,000 up until today's date. March 6th to March 17th, March 18th to April 2nd, April 2nd to April 3rd, April 4th to April 9th, April 10th to April 12th, April 13th to April 16th, April 17th to May 23rd, May 24th to July 9th, July 10th to September 6th, September 7th to September 10th. We see a lot of red, and this is September 11th we're current. Actually, we just had one officer come back off injured on duty on midnights. So that red line don't be any, there anymore effective last night. So now we only have one officer that's out on injured on duty. But that's what we face all year this year, trying to keep up with that.
Do you allow a, I don't pay it?
I'm sorry, I don't pay it, just for sergeants. So patrolman can be a sergeant if he's got five years of service, that's the only item, five to five, they pay.
American, not shift.
Uh, what's that?
Uh...
I don't have it by shift, uh, but I pay it.
Shift hours and shots?
Yes. So, we have a very professional Police Department. I have had the opportunity of working with several Police Departments, especially in the near future. And I'm telling you, in my opinion, our guys are top-notch. Tactically, operationally, the way we talk to each other, we're all on the same page. And when we get to a scene, we shut the scene down, like no other department that I've seen. We do things well, but the one thing that we do very well and keeps us very safe here in the City Warder League is traffic interdiction. You can't swing a dead cat without seeing somebody pulled over. We do traffic interdiction very well, and I'll tell you to what extent that works. We try to, with our investigators, we try to set up drug buys in the City Warder League. And we've had drug dealers call us, call our confidential informant on tape lines and say, "No hobby, too hot, not coming to Warder League." That's how good we do with that traffic interdiction. So what does that mean? We have a lot of people that live here that go somewhere else to commit crimes. They don't want to live here anymore because they know they're gonna have to drive up 19th Street from the chance of being stopped with either drugs in their car or a gun in their car or something that they're not supposed to have. That's what we do very well here, and that's what's kept us ahead of the curve, I believe, from a safety standpoint. We also do foot patrols, almost unheard of nowadays. On 19th Street, most recently, Councilman Patricelli asked that we pick it up in the housing complexes because there's been some people walking through the housing complex, go painters and things like that. The first night we did a foot patrol in the housing complex, it led to two arrests. So we do things like that very well. Property checks. There's not a lot of cities where you can call the Police Department and say, "Hey, I'm going on vacation for a week, can you keep an eye on my house?" And you can see that on your camera at your house, that our guys are getting out of their car and physically walking around your property to make sure to open windows, no signs of forced entry, things like that. Problem-oriented policing details. This is Councilman Patricelli's housing complex, we call that a POP detail, P-O-P, problem-oriented policing. We know there's an issue in those housing complexes, so we're gonna go out, roots on the ground, walk around, and make sure that we keep the area proactively safe. Citizen complaints. We have the opportunity through our Facebook page, through our anonymous tips, through me blasting my number all over the place, our Facebook page, the opportunity for people to reach out to us and say, "Hey, we're having an issue here, how can we address it?" Patrol techniques. We are very creative when it comes down to patrol techniques. We have guys that will see an officer that, will see a subject that's walking down the street, they know he just looks out of place. The lights go off, they pull over, they sit, they watch. Those kind of techniques, although they seem very simple, are kind of a weapon that we have in our arsenal that allows us to sometimes just sit back and observe, and then run up on the guy and say, "Hey, what are you doing here, 2:00 in the morning, and you're riding bikes, no light on, what are you doing in this neighborhood? Where you live here, where you heading, where you coming from?", things like that. Terry stops. Terry stops are, we do them all day. And what a Terry stop is, is a guy getting out of a car, saying, "Hey, how are you?", introduce yourself, start talking to the guy. "Where are you from? Where are you heading? You from the area? Do you know somebody that lives here?" And it gives us a dialogue and we get to know these people. Some of them are bad people, they're just not doing anything bad at that specific time. But that gives us the ability to gain that knowledge, so when I see that guy who has a noticeable scar on his face, and that's a description that I get from a robbery two days from now, that guy stands out in my mind, which is talking about him, I might talk to him, I might use to him. Those are things that we do very well here. Here's an example. This is John Pedeswell. He was a resident in the City Warder League, but he wasn't supposed to be a resident in the City Warder League, he was a registered sex offender. So we got some information that he was kind of hanging in the area and he wasn't supposed to be. So we had traffic stops. Hey, if you see this guy driving in the area, get some proper cause, see what he's doing wrong, pull the car over and see what he's doing. That led to him getting a parole violation because we found out that he was living there and he wasn't supposed to, he wasn't registered. Put him in jail. We had information that he may have had sexual contact with one of the one JVs that live in that house. We gleaned information when he was in jail through his conversations to that JV female that he was subjecting her to sexual contact. He was arrested and he's currently serving 12 years in state prison. All through our routine patrol activities and our investigation. This, we got through a citizen tip. Our Criminal Investigations Division picked it up. This guy's name is Infinite Barry, he's from New York City. He's 18 years old, has absolutely no criminal record. We got a tip that there may be some activity, drug activity on the 1800 block before that. We stopped Infinite Barry coming from that address. And he has on him a little over 100 bags of heroin on him, and he has a passenger in the vehicle. The passenger that's in the vehicle doesn't want to get arrested, so he agrees to work with us as a confidential informant. That confidential informant led us to an arrest, awesome the Sheriff's Department in the City of Albany, of a subject that had 1,480 bags of heroin on him and quantity of crack cocaine. So it's those little things, those little patrol techniques, the investigator involving leads us to those bigger cases. An occupied vehicle, I'm sorry, an occupied vehicle in a Christ Shopper, go Christ Shopper parking lot here. It's got two males in it and a car pulled up next to it. It's 9:30 at night, one of our officers pulls up and says, "That's I, why is your two cars in that parking lot?" He rolls up the second car, he has a quantity of crack cocaine in the cup holder. He has powdered ecstasy in the other cup holder, and he's got 44 Xanax pills in his pot, as well as $3,000 cash. We arrest three males, we turn one into a confidential informant, and he leads us to a huge arrest in Schenectady County of marijuana that will probably have high-dollar seizures through the asset forfeiture program. Vehicle pursuits are becoming more and more prominent, especially with us. We seem to have a tendency to pull over people that have something in the car that they don't want us to find. Foot pursuit in April with two males. One was on parole, he had a large quantity of marijuana in the car. July of 2018. DWI assault second. This guy drove his car onto the new field in Shaker just before they laid the AstroTurf down and led us on a foot pursuit for DWI. In August of 2018, we had the operator flee while the officer attempts to stop his vehicle, and then we get him in the City of Troy, we stop him, and he's subsequently arrested. That person is the same guy that caused the lockdown at the school based on the activity of venomous trace parts. Same guy. We had a Cohoes guy come over to the City Warder League putting a loaded silver handgun in the face of somebody. We didn't have a good idea where we was, but through good patrol tactics, we contacted both the Albany Crime Analysis Center and Cohoes PD. We ID'd him, and about a week later, he's arrested by US Marshal Flannan Felony Squad on our charges, currently in state prison. Neighbor complaints on 24th Street, a 1,000 blocks, to be specific, 24th Street led to the arrest of these two gentlemen, they're father and son. Several neighbors complained about drug investigation. This subject here was already on probation out of Florida. We got enough information through controlled buys that we executed a search warrant, arrested him, and in his apartment, he had a loaded .45 caliber handgun and a sawed-off shotgun, as well as quantity of heroin and cocaine. This is a guy that committed burglaries in Warder League, got out on parole, and went right back out and started committing burglaries again. One of our investigators followed him one day and he's carrying stolen property, proceeds from a burglary of a house that he just broke into. He was arrested for possession of stolen property and actually caught for two burglaries. And this is just from the other day. This is, we just had the news story yesterday with the drones. We had a vehicle, a running vehicle stolen on 7th Street, the 600 block of 7th Street. It goes into the City of Troy, our officers put the description of the vehicle out right away, we give it to Troy PD. Troy sees the vehicle, they follow it, they light it up, they try to stop it, and jumps on 378, it's 5:00 in the afternoon, rush hour traffic. So they discontinue it. Our officer is waiting on First and Third, which is the border of our city, the southernmost border of our city. He sees our officer tries to evade him, crashes the vehicle into the utility pole on First and Third, and they both exit the vehicle, they both run. We get the first subject right here, right away. The second subject bent down in a field behind FedEx. We call Colony, Colony has a drone that has thermal imaging. He just got done running, his body temperature probably about 104 degrees, and it rained all day. The field temperature was about 50, he stood out like a sore thumb. Within 15 minutes, we had our suspect arrested. These are things that happen in our city that don't always make the news, but they happen. And our patrol techniques, our patrol officers are very good at their job. Assault third, 16, as of 10/1, from 1/1 to 10/1 2018. Assault second, nine. Menacing with a weapon, 11. Five sex crimes, 15 burglaries, 10 resisting. Criminal contempt. Criminal contempt is, you have an order of protection against me and I violate, I, you're going near you, I beat you up, I do something to violate that court order. Criminal possession of a control substance, 34. Criminal sale, 12 arrests. 17 weapons possession arrests, five unlawful fleeing. Traffic laws. Suspended license, 89 arrests. Suspended more than three times on three dates, 61. AUO first, you're suspended more than we can count, two. 15 DWI, eight reckless driving. Total arrest, 647. The city has 10,000 people in it, we're arresting almost 1% of our, 10% of our population. Total UTT sometimes, in fairness, sometimes we arrest the same person. Total UTT is 3,253. For a 24-man staff, that's an outstanding number of traffic teams. Working short much of the year. 3,253. So, I've boasted for quite some time now, so let's get into it. So here's what I'd like to do for 2019. I'd like to proactively hire three additional officers to account for the three retirees that we're going to have in 2019. The new officer will be productive and on the street in September of 2019. Retirement will stagger from April through August. This is something that we don't do here. We don't hire a guy's replacement while that guy is still working. What it does is, it saves us in overtime, and believe it or not, I have a couple spreadsheets that will show that. I want to increase the OT budget for the Police Department to $400,000. That's sticker shop right now, okay? And I want to explain why. $400,000 is our base number, and Mike can kind of back me up on this, Mike better back me up on this. We take some of that money out through court overtime, which is reimbursed by OCA, traffic that we reimburse for Albany County, DWI. We also have, which we don't have a lot now, but we also have a drug seizure fund, which we can pay the investigator overtime. So as these cases become more affluent and as we get that money in, we're able to pay that number down through Reddit. Okay, so it's $400,000 right now, but as we pay that down, that number drops. The OT costs will be reduced through a quicker turnaround for the replacement employees. So as one leaves, one takes their spot. Unforeseen injuries are an expense that cripple our budgetary limits. But unfortunately, based on what we do and what we're running into now, they become an unfortunate experience of the job. Now, what I've done was, I've broken down the recruits and who they're replacing, and I put them in four options. So the first option is the three recruits that I'm asking for, all three. The second is only two, the third is just one, and the fourth is, we just replace them with overtime. Okay? Now, the deceiving thing is, is that it is actually cheaper for us to go through the year and pay overtime than it is for us to hire those recruits, excuse me, okay? By a tune of about $23,000. But what you'll notice first of all is that out of that 323, $160,000 comes out of overtime for replace. So that depletes that $400,000 that I'm asking you for to get that cushion down to 240, right off the bat. You know that you're gonna pay that amount of overtime. As you go up and limit the amount of overtime, it gets more expensive, but you can see that the overtime reduces. Now, the reason that the overtime is still there, even though we're hiring three recruits... Now, the reason that the overtime is still there, even though we're hiring three recruits, when they start in January, it takes them six months to get out of the academy, okay? Which puts them here in June, usually early July. And then they have a field training program that they have to go through, so we can kind of get them along our line of speed, get them some job experience before we cut them loose and say, "Okay, you're a cop, now go out on your own." So around September would be when those new recruits get out of the academy. Okay, we talked about how the overtime takes effect, right? And this is our most expensive. If we hire three while the three are still working, it's our most expensive. But look at 2020, it's your least expensive going forward. In 2020, option two, $224,000, about 101 comes out of overtime. That's the next year. And option three, where we had two overtime, goes up to $264,000 with 202,000 coming out of overtime. And then your last, $305,000, we didn't hire anyone. $305,000 is going to cost you to replace those people for the entire year of 2020 if we don't hire them. So now it inverts. Your cheapest is if we hire the three recruits going forward. The academy's happening six months blocks. So it's either they start in January or they start in July. It's still six months. So all we're doing is if we wait until July, we're just picking that kid down.
Have you ever thought about hiring another officer from another department? You don't have that yet?
I didn't prepare that. The reason I didn't is because, based on our previous conversations, I thought it was the council's inclination that we wanted homegrown guys on our list.
I like that myself, but it saves a bunch more money.
It's not as much of a save, because basically the difference between a seasoned officer and somebody that you're bringing in from another department is, I don't want to say negligible, but it's close, maybe 15 to 20,000 dollars per year. So the savings isn't as much as it is when you start talking about recruits. But I can certainly provide.
I guess so, with that and the other way.
Because I needed a ladder. Now I need new recruits, so I'm setting another ladder. Any questions on that?
Chief, when you showed the numbers in 2020 for the new recruits, you increased the number for the new recruit. Can you explain why you did that?
I increased the number based on, okay, so after a year of service, a recruit gets hired in January 1st, he comes in the door making $44,000 a year. We'll give you 44 grand, show us you can do the job. The next year, he gets bumped up to the regular pay rate, which is $61,000. Which is why the number goes from 3457 to 5,097. Because in January, the following year, he gets that pay increase.
What is the difference from where they get bumped up to, to where the ones that are retired are at now?
It really depends on who's retired. Because they're all at different grades. One's a lieutenant, one's a sergeant, one's a patrolman. So it really depends on where they are in the grade. He averages about $20,000.
Is there a way to say how much in two years you're saving if I have the recruits?
Well, your biggest savings is having a recruit. Yeah, I mean, if I put a lateral up there, the savings aren't going to be anywhere near the 183 that we're showing.
Do you feel $20,000 is too big of a chunk for a year?
It's contractual, I don't have any.
That's named by a lot of people. Well, it's a lot.
Yeah, well, I guess that's.
I mean, it's dangerous, yeah, but it's embarrassing. $17,000 for one year?
Well, I think the offset was start everybody at 61. I think the union agreed with make sure these guys could do the job first, that's why we started 4-4 and that. So the, you know, the adverse of that is, if we didn't have that agreement, everybody would start at 61. So, when I prepared the budget, what I did was I incorporated the savings that we're going to see based on these individuals retiring. So anybody, anywhere that's in red, that's the savings that'll reflect that person's retirement and the difference between them and the person that we're bringing in for their position. So you can see Sergeant Penn, he retired on September 28th. We will have a lateral sworn in on Monday to replace him. And the difference between his pay and the lateral's pay will be $18,000. And that's $18,000 in savings going forward. Now, there's one that I have compensated for. I know with 95% assurance that the ones that I've planned for, and that would be tomorrow, Robert's Department, I know they're retiring in the end, before the other year. So that's why I've done this. Sergeant Ellis, you noticed that I don't have anybody here for him. He's never come to me to say, "Hey, I'm thinking about going in January." But in all honesty, Walter could go to lunch and knock him back. You know, and that's something that we'll have to try to compensate for, either through our hiring process, through lateral transfers.
After Officer Ellis, who else is in the retirement bracket?
Then it goes right down to Sergeant Payne, who still has about seven years left.
So nobody?
Right. There's a big gap between those that are eligible to retire and those that aren't. So, you'll see here that there's a, we bring it all down, really the difference between 2018 and 2019, even with hiring these three people, is only $712.33 with all the savings that we get through hiring the new recruits for the officers that were retired. Because those savings are reflected, and the difference in salary is $712,000, $712.33. Now bear in mind, that's pretty impressive when everybody here got a 1% raise from 2018 to 2019. And we kept it $712,000. So you'll see the overtime is in here. And the overtime obviously is a raise in overtime from 300,000 to 400,000, 33% increase. Everything else, with the exception of gasoline, either stays the same or reduces. The reason that gasoline goes up is because we used to pay a percentage. I paid, corrected from around 25% of the gas. I paid, prior to this, I paid 50%. I paid 50% of the gas, but I actually used more than 50% of the gas. So I wasn't paying when I should. We went through all the departments, Finance actually, and Jeremy went through all the departments and made adjustments. So even though you see an increase in my gas, that'll be made up in other areas. So PPW will reduce, water will reduce. So overall, that increase kind of works itself out to the same bottom.
We saw that in the previous budget workshop with Highway Department, there was a major
So what we did was, I increased our revenue for, through court fees and patrol division fines, $50,000. You notice that right now it's $235,000. But if we go back, I'll just repeat it for you. Right now, in October, we're $225,000 this year. So we just have to stay on the same pace next year and around this year. And actually, we've lost a lot between this year and last year. So with additional staffing, with new guys out there, I have no doubt that we will far exceed the numbers of where we are right now. So the bottom line here is, is that we actually, the bottom line is a $118,000 increase from last year to this year, from 2018 to 2019. That's with $100,000 in overtime and everybody's 1% raise throughout the year. Nothing else has changed. Any questions? Paul?
I understand with the workforce and that, as far as equipment, we had talked last year at budget meeting about Tom, you guys projecting how much you need to replace the police cars to roll it down over the years. That's in there also.
It is not. The reason that it's not is because I can't push that burden onto the taxpayer.
There's going to take it in a block, six years down the line.
But you're talking about the bond that we already got. We got two police cars out of the bond that was approved last year.
Right, I think we were just talking about budgeting a police car so that, you know, I say it's $50,000 for a police car. One year you put $10,000, the next year you put, so it's not going to be a slump when you need one or two.
Which, that's kind of the way that it worked out with the two new police cars. Basically what that does is now takes two of the other cars and puts them in reserve. And now I'm running two new cars all the time, and that takes the toll off of the other car for those two new ones. I didn't budget for new ones, but I kept my vehicle maintenance the same, where in that pot, any other year, I would probably increase my vehicle maintenance without those two new vehicles. But now I don't have to because I have two.
Paul, to further answer your question, what we did in last year's budget and plan to continue to do moving forward was, we put that, we broke down those numbers and had an equipment reserve that would cover the cost of future purchases of police vehicles. When it came to use the useful life, how many vehicles the chief needs to run his department, use the useful life and took that number and we put that in there. We did that for each department, and that's how we came up with our annual amounts of whatever we reserve.
And the other option that we have is, although that fund's kind of low right now, we also have asset forfeiture, which allows us to use that money to purchase new vehicles independently from passing on expenses.
The only other question I had is, like, I know you guys have certain cameras that are around, do you use them to budget or is that a different budget of the city as far as adding more cameras in different parts, in more areas of the city to report what's going on?
Yeah, the cameras themselves are separate from the budget, they come out of our asset forfeiture account. We haven't expressed the interest in adding more cameras because the issue that we're having now is the bandwidth that we're sharing all these cameras on is a little low to support the number of cameras that we have. So then you're talking a lot more money to increase that bandwidth, as well as provide hubs and transfer that signal all the way down. So it becomes a more costly endeavor to get into because you're not just talking about slapping a couple cameras on a phone and we're good to go. It's the infrastructure that's behind that that supports it, that is a lot more, not only labor intensive, but obviously financially intensive. But it is something that we're always thinking about, what can we do to add more. Especially down in South Bend, we don't have a lot of cameras down in South Bend.
Just to go through some of the things that the chief has on his budget here, and again, you know, these numbers were put together by the Finance Department and Chief. Based on the chief's request, all the information that he provided, past years and future trends, as expected, the increase in expenditure that has been requested is 161,000. And that equals out to, based on what our assessed value is, that would equal a 4.2% increase in the tax rate. Because we did a presentation in September of what a base budget looked like going into this year. As we continue to go through, I mentioned what each one of these increases means. And so an increase of this amount would equal a 4.2% tax rate increase. So again, I bring that up just because, again, these are, these budget workshops are used to provide direction, for the council to provide direction to me so I can put the budget together. And when we look at it as a whole and then break down the parts, there's either increase in taxes or somehow or some way, reduction in service to offset that. So based on everything that the chief presented today and what this comes out to, I look forward to hearing from the council in the future as to any changes or discrepancies that they would have in the change of budget request.
Yeah, if I could add that, obviously hiring three recruits is time. We have to canvas, we have to put them through agilities, through psychologicals, through polygraphs. So that's a time-consuming process. And certainly I'm not trying to push anybody's hand, but I just want to keep that kind of the timetable in everybody's mind when it comes to either yes or no, depending on, you know, number and if we can hire them. The quicker I know, the quicker I can move through the process. And I can actually move through the process in the hopes of them and just kind of keep a surfer on this.
I was under the impression we didn't get that.
Well, the issue that was brought up to me, and actually I should say the fact that was brought up to me that I didn't realize is that we have a resident list and then we have a non-resident list. And then once we're done canvassing the resident list, we canvass the non-resident list. And that's the process that we're going to make. We've exhausted the resident list with, I believe, three candidates, and then we've gone to canvass the non-resident list in order to get more candidates. The issue that we have is that we brought, last time we did an agility test, we brought 10 in two halves. So I want to make sure we're bringing enough in that we can get enough candidates to choose from, or successfully get someone to canvass the list.
Are the non-resident list also by bike rate?
They're bike rate, yes.
So that A would think be as high or higher than the resident list?
That is correct. Starting at 95 with the non-resident list, or at 75 with the resident list.
And they would be required to move into the city and have residency before being hired?
Before being hired in January, like a budget?
How many do we have candidates? Artie's not specific with the number, and I think he knows that, so there's no call for, you know, discrepancy that I'm trying to figure out who's on the list. He just tells me the number that he's going to canvass in order to get enough candidates. Any other questions for the chief or any comments?
How much does it cost to train an officer?
Well, it's your academy time and then we pay $8,500 per officer. Or we pay 8,500, we pay 1,500 per officer when they go through the academy. But we pay that whether we have somebody in the academy or not. So every year, we're paying those academy fees for the event of us putting somebody in the academy. So we pay, is that figured in? It comes out of our general services. But we pay every year, so we pay a percentage. Actually, I think we pay a flat dollar amount based on the number of officers that we have working. So we have 25 officers here right now, we pay a flat dollar amount per officer, per year, so we can use the services in the academy. So when we put somebody in the academy, they don't charge us, we order to pay that. We just pay for their equipment, their rounds that they're using, their range, their uniforms.
Is that a contact zone?
Yes.
Do we do that every year?
No, it's the same every year. We just prenup, prenup. Everybody pays the same amount per officer, just how many guys at the hand or something. Paul?
So, being that you're already canvassing outside the city, is there a list of people that are working with latos? I know you do. I just didn't know if you have a list of people that are trying to do it that are already experienced, officer versus hiring somebody that may not work out as a recruit, but you've got somebody to see.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily work that way. Basically what happens is I'll send a letter out to a distribution I have to all the departments in the area to say, "Hey, we're currently canvassing for two latos." And then interested candidates send me a resume. I have a stack of resumes. But in all honesty, some people are latos for a reason, right? They either hood and cut it, they got fired somewhere, they have a history. So we have to vet those people very carefully. So because I have 20 resumes, doesn't mean I have 20 candidates.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. We're kind of spare.
Please.
I can't donate your time to Mr. Umane.
Says I want.